Yeah.
All right, I have no problem giving that a lie.
No, it's do this.
Yeah, but you know what's really funny is.
Jonathan, thank you for that. I will. Forgot about.
Nobody wants to.
No, but people are already starting. And like their stock price has dropped ten dollars. I was, I've been watching the stock prices.
Is it Kellogg's, is it Cheerios, Kellogg's Cheerios?
Kellogg's Cheerios.
Yes.
That's what I feed my fish. The fish are gonna die. I don't care really. I'm gonna, I gotta let. It'll keep better. Alright, good. Like, the fish will live one more year. We want to stop pile and find a deer brand or something.
So the really cool thing is people are like sharing one cinnamon dust crunch recipes online. How to make your own pop tart? Look, I'm not even a pro at this. I guess I'm not. So I'm like, I'm gonna have to try it because they're like, you just like.
Just pastry and jelly.
Well, yeah, much better than the regular. And actually, it's not pop tarts, who is it? Who's the other pop tart?
I don't know.
Toaster, toaster treats or something.
No, it's not toaster strudel, but it was somebody before, back in the day, somebody before whoever it is.
In the report, we didn't have pop tarts.
No, we had pop tart either.
Yeah, no, we didn't ever.
We didn't get any special.
Yeah, that was like, that was like the McDonald's once in a while.
You eat your crackers for breakfast, like every other pork and burger.
But apparently somebody said, oh yeah, we're making a pop tart recipe and Kellogg's is back in early nineteen hundreds. Kellogg's went, ooh, you are? Snag. Came up with it and got it out first.
Let's just go clearly assess this within our two women here. Any company run by a man is gonna go down the tubes pretty quickly. Sorry, sorry.
You know what? No, it's just, it's, yeah, nothing.
Very, very.
It's my little iceberg.
I would like to welcome everybody to the Idaho Springs work session for March eleventh, twenty twenty four. And this work session is a little bit shorter than usual with, why we're starting at six. We have three things on the agenda, starting with the romp presentation. And Jonathan, I'm guessing you're gonna kick that one off?
I am. Mayor Council Amy Saxton, who is the Director of Strategic and Community Plan, was supposed to join us this evening, but she is not feeling well. I had kind of planned to tease this conversation up, but I was thinking I could give you a little overview of what the romp has been. For about the last two years, the county has been working on an outdoor management plan for recreation in Clear Creek County. And it's involved a lot of stakeholders. I don't know exactly how many, but I think it's been every major stakeholder group within the county and a lot of outdoor recreational groups that use like O A Bs and fishing and rafting and all the different kinds of activities that happen in the county. And generally, the, the goal has been to look at whether or not there's opportunities to like work regionally to manage the impacts of tourism on our econ, on both our economy and on residents. Make sure that we're not a place that just gets loved to death and that we balance all these different competing priorities. To establish priorities for what's important when we look at outdoor recreation, like do we want to manage? I don't know, we call them trails that aren't supposed to exist. Do we want to manage river access? How do we look at all these different destinations? Do we want to start making people take buses up to Mount Blue Sky or reservations? Or what's the, what do we want to do? What are our goals? And then how can we create capacity to do all these things and how can we really integrate the community into these decisions? So we have kind of advisory boards that are similar to how like planning commissioner variance board would work and kind of help guide some of these efforts and these strategic goals. Amy had asked me and the city if city council would consider formally endorsing this romp or adopting it as kind of like a city adjacent plan. And so our intention tonight had been for her to come and talk to you guys about that. I think that there's some pluses and minuses of doing that. There's, there's a lot of pieces that are bigger than Idaho Springs. But I think that us having a seat at the table in the tourism conversation is probably a good thing. We're one of the first places people come in, one of the most highly impacted areas in the county. Like in terms of, of density of vehicles as people come to different locations. So I think that there's some, there's some room for a conversation with that. And I think I might let that be part of what Amy talks to you about. She would like to come back on the twenty fifth. But I kind of wanted to just give you an idea of like my participation in this process because I have been the main stakeholder for Idaho Springs. Jared had come with me at the beginning, but then when he left, it was just me. So basically I was participating in two different meetings. There was a leadership group and then like a bigger stakeholder group. And just trying to kind of align these goals to what I know of the city goals based on council strategic plan and then our comprehensive plan. My staff report kind of lays out where I think that the intersection is in the comp plan. You know, it's really about quality of life and managing these impacts on our community. And I think it's always, and Idaho Springs comes down to a balancing act between service and tourism, which forms the biggest part of our economy. And providing quality services to our residents and making sure that their lives are not heavily impacted by those activities. And I think that the ROM does a pretty good job of kind of striking that balance. It has several elements in there. I think the ones that really affect us the most are the rafting work. There's been some conversations about whether or not we could collaborate more closely with the county and specifically C dot. Because that's where the majority of rafting put-ins are, is either on C dot property or city property. The county actually doesn't really have that many per se that are just theirs. But is there a way that we could build a permitting program that would manage the traffic on the river? We know that we have pretty heavy impacts at CRC Park from rafting. And that's been something the city has dealt with for a while. We've also really wanted to establish by policy some kind of system to count rafting better so that the fees are more equitable. We're not a hundred percent sure that the fees even really cover staff time right now for wrapping. But it's something that the community's been working with us pretty proactively with and we want to, you know, we want to again strike that balance between making sure that they can do what they need to do, but making sure that our residents can get to the park and have parking and all those kinds of things. So I think that's probably our biggest impact area. There's a lot of other things that are very similar to what you guys have talked about, like in terms of Mount Blue Sky. You know, we've had some challenges over by the cemetery with offer of vehicle use, not nearly the same as what they talk about in Empire and places like that. But there is some of these things that have intersection for us. So I think most of this is laid out in my staff report. If you guys have any specific questions about the ROM, I'm happy to answer them. Or Amy says that she'd like to come back for a work session. So we can do that and have her give her, her spiel.
Well, I do have some questions. Is, how is this going to be set up leadership wise? Like, two questions actually. Do you feel like this is gonna happen regardless of how we feel about it?
The county's already adopted the plan and they're gonna be working on these goals as an entity. I think that it's a pretty good plan and the goals in it are pretty reasonable. But I think that where we want to make sure that we're careful is protecting city interests and what, what your strategic goals are for the city. Especially in this rafting world where the majority of kind of critical rafting apparitions happen in Idaho Springs. So I think for me personally, just looking at how we have managed this in the past. We have, we have a certain level of staff capacity here at City Hall. And if there's opportunities to regionally collaborate that uplift the city and make sure that our goals are met and that we can, we can do these things better, I think those are conversations we want to have. But I, I had told Amy, one of the things that I'm not sure about is, is like, do we care about trailheads at like for access points severe shot? And I'm not a hundred percent sure that that's something that we necessarily care about, other than just making sure that we understand what needs to happen so that we can, you know, our businesses can help move people to where they're going and things like that.
So I get exactly what you're saying, but if you think about where we are, like right now, we do not have another, we don't have any Forest Service access points except the visitor center. And I know from talking to the executive director for the Historical Society, that they're in the process of doing a pretty great overhaul with their Forest Service. I don't know if that's because you guys have been there, you know, but I know that she's had some relatively productive meetings with them. So I think it's important that we at least know and understand what's going on with other like Mount Beerschad or other Forest Service properties. Because this is where people come. Like, from my understanding, and I could totally be speaking out of turn. I don't think that the Forest Service has any plans to put in, you know, any other place where the public can walk in. Like, we have a place and that's where it's gonna be.
Yeah, and I think that they were stakeholders in this process. A lot of, that's really one of the county's main problems is mostly these trail systems are accessed through forces, Forest Service property or city property. Or like an empire, same situation. And so there's a lot of people that need to be at the table. And I think this, this and or this advisory group that they want to build and board could potentially be beneficial for the city to make sure that we're represented there in the regional effort. But again, I think that my, that we would want to make sure that we have some pretty clear understanding of like what that role is on the board and, and how decisions are made, especially not that there's gonna be decisions that take local control away from Idaho Springs, but we just want to make sure that we're clear on, on how that works. And I think that that's part of what the ROM talks about. In my mind, I don't really think it like elaborates exactly on the structure of that because I think the intention would be to form some sort of agreement with the different stakeholders that would participate. And I think that's something that Amy might speak better to. But I think if we were going to participate in effort in that, that's, it's very similar to the, the M J H A conversation. We just want to make sure we really spell out, you know, the look, the kind of the micro issues and the macro issues of what we'd be involved in.
Well, I do worry about local control because I don't think anybody else has the same challenges with rafting that we do. So I don't want Empire saying, wow, you think you should do this? Well, you don't live here. You know, you don't live down by twenty third and have to deal with, can't use the park on certain, so. But at the same time, if this is already gonna be there, we have to have a seat at the table.
Yeah. And it's, it really is a pretty collaborative plan. I think that it supports. I put a link to it in my report. It's, it's pretty long, but it does have, it does have some pretty good concurrence with the comprehensive plan. And I think it's generally in line with this conversation that you've heard about recreation management in the last few years in Clear Creek County in general.
I would say that I would want to see like if there, if the trailheads are an empire, then the Forest Service and Empire take the lead on decision making in that. Because that impacts them the most. Or if it's in Georgetown or Silver Plume or whatever, like I would want to see some kind of language and say, you know, the municipality or the area that is most impacted takes the lead in the discussion. It's a little more weight in the discussion.
Yeah, Lisa, on a related note, tomorrow at four P M. we're meeting with the new district ranger. So anyways, she's, she's meeting with us for an hour tomorrow because your point about areas being disproportionately affected, I, I think certainly describes Idaho Springs.
You know, my kid works over at the Historic Society and I'm like, how was the day? And it'll be a dead day, but people are, they'll have like thirty people that'll roll in looking at hiking or camping and, I mean, now.
Exactly.
In February. I would be supportive of that. I just, I would like to see some very defined, like if this is in a certain municipalities area, they are the lead on that one.
Or could they have the final say on it?
Or the final say, something. I don't know how to do that language.
I think the final say actually is the way to go because, I mean, Empire's a perfect example. It's overrun every year with a variety of different outdoors people. And, and I know it's a pain on the town. They don't really have the resources to protect themselves. I certainly as a Idaho Springs person wouldn't want to say, well, you need to suck it up or whatever, because that's certainly not what I want to have that happen here.
No.
So final say, I think with the town.
I like final say.
Yeah, go and, and guiding the conversation too.
So Jonathan, really step doesn't need direction right now. I think we could probably take some direction after Amy has a, a talk with us about it as well as far as the county's designs.
Yeah, and I think if, I think we can probably participate in these efforts either way. But what she specifically asked for was either a resolution of support of either part or all of the ROM or potentially adopting the document, which I think is a little bit trickier process. I'm not a hundred percent sure exactly what. We probably have to take it to plan and commission and then look at, look at it a little bit more that way. But I think that overall the document is supportive of, of Idaho Springs goals.
Well, I would be in support of adopting a support. Like I would like to see things to talk about river access. Every time I hear it now, I think about the conversation with Jeremy about, you know, if you have really close river access, how many people are gonna fall? Like from, you know, just with the fire authority deal, how many people are gonna fall in during, you know, when it's high runoff or what? Like, that does not stay out of my mind. And I think if we're gonna add more river access, that has to be part of it. Sorry, that's getting a little in the weeds, but that was in my notes.
All right. Is there anything further on the ROM?
Jonathan, is there a group that will continue out of the ROM?
John, is there a group that will continue out of the ROM forward?
Yeah. So the project leadership team, should forget what our, our ROM acronym is, but that's the team. They're still meeting infrequently and the last request at that meeting was, was how we, if we could support this document in some way. And then once I think that has been done, there'll be additional steps to identify the transition, you know, transitioning to this, this, uh, advisory group or committee or whatever it ends up being. And then that's like discussion that would still need to happen a little bit, I think. So this is still implementation wise, probably a few months out at the minimum.
I mean, no surprise that county has identified, uh, outdoor recreation as one of the, i- if not the economic driver with the downturn in revenue from Henderson lines.
That makes sense.
So, and of course we already have a lot of outdoor recreation and the impact from visitors. But how to best manage that? So I, I think we all agree with that. Um, but you know, how, how can we best handle that going forward?
Well, that's what I heard most when I was doing my door knocking in November was that people really struggle with the influx of visitors. You know, so if we have a better, and I think people are more okay with it because like, look at the national parks, like, you know, you're having to go on a reservation for the national parks because they're so busy. And people grasp about it, but they still do it.
They'll get used to that too. I mean, it's just, it is what it is.
Well, that's what Jonathan said. We don't want to be loved to death.
Yeah. And I, I think that's why the national parks have done, you know, Mount Blue Sky as well. It just makes sense to save our, you know, save our resources.
It does. And I think Andy, uh, earlier on was, uh, had an excellent suggestion about the possibility of a shuttle bus, for example, to Mount Blue Sky. And I, I bring this up because I know, uh, Commissioner Randy Relo had mentioned that, that you could have as many as seventeen hundred people go up the trailhead to, uh, like Grazentoria's on a busy weekend. If you can imagine, I mean, that's a staggering amount.
Let's see, a lot of cars for that little.
No.
Trailhead, really. So I guess the question to that, I love the shuttle, don't get me wrong, because it would completely, it would take down, um, uh, engine, you know, stuff up there on the, on, and emissions on the, on the mountain. But where are we going to park those cars? Again, we got to figure that out. They can't park in town. And on, and on the flip side of that, I don't want to necessarily take those visitors out of IS and park them someplace in the county where they're not going to use us as their their, their food hub or their shopping hub.
One thing we did talk about that could have implications for us and how we steer people is, one of the ideas is instead of just trying to manage, like two or three trails that are the most popular, say, well, you know, maybe this is the peak, the trail that you know, but have you been up Quinella Pass and seen these other awesome trails that are there or like over here or over there? And maybe trying to spread some of that out and like some kind of campaign that would like move people to like some of the less, just less popular things and very. Yeah.
All right. Well, uh, anything further on the ROM?
I do have one, one question and, and it goes back to many times. So we do have a, the old sewer plant property. And, and we talked about this a long, long time ago. I, I don't know what it is supposed to be now, but that would be a great parking lot. Um, except that you can't get trucks underneath the, the overpass.
Yeah, well, it's all filled in now. Uh, Paul?
It is not necessarily filled in, but, uh, we've raised level over the years. And long before I came on that level, it's been raised over the years, but it's currently being used for soils. That's where we keep uh, dry sorted dirt. That's where we keep.
I've been down there recently. Yeah. I, I know, but do we have to?
Where else can we keep them?
I don't know. Where else can we park people?
The, the other challenge is access because.
It's only, would only be cars that you can get into that bridge.
Well, there's, there's really no vehicle vehicular access anymore because the greenway goes through under there. And there's not enough room under the bridge. I mean, I guess, I mean, possible, but right now it's just enough room for the greenway and it's pretty much limited the service vehicles going back there on occasion with, with Public Works, but and maintenance vehicles, but not, it's not set up to, to have, to handle.
I get it. I just, I know that this has been like, it's a nice piece of property. It's in within the city limits. It is literally the view sign that says, welcome to Idaho Springs. And it's basically, let's be really clear and honest, it's a garbage dump. So I mean, I'm just thinking that if it's a parking lot, I could actually get by with that better than what it is right now. Cause I know that they didn't mitigate all that sewer plant that's underneath all that soil.
Oh no.
It's a, yeah, I know. It's a huge jail. It's a huge jail. Anyway.
Well, I think that's going to have to be part of this for all the stakeholders is, uh, how do you, where do you park people? We're going to end up with some kind of shuttle or something. Like that's going to have to be a conversation. Everybody struggles with it. It's not just us.
Well, we're about ready to have a bigger struggle with it, of course. Uh, when we go to try the parking lot up.
Oh my gosh.
Right? I mean.
Yeah. I mean, yeah.
I can feel the headaches.
Well, uh, is there anything further on the ROM?
Black Hawk just leveled a mountain.
Yeah.
They've done that in the past many times though.
All it takes is.
All right. I'd like to move on to, uh, special events and, uh, Sadie and Steve, welcome, welcome.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Councilwoman.
Well, it's good to have you.
Yeah. As always, back talking about the marketplace. Here I am. Again. Um, so you guys have a marketplace plan in front of you. There are some changes that we will speak to. There's some incorrect information as well as some added information to go over the plan. Um, suggesting, uh, closing traffic on minor, beginning part of May, obviously, as always, these decisions are weather dependent. If we're getting a lot of snow, we'll need to delay and wait. Um, obviously working very closely with Public Works to make sure that we're not making that decision too quickly. This was similar to the timeline we closed last year, um, which gives us enough time to set up to be open for Mother's Day. Um, which a lot of the restaurants really enjoy having outdoor space activated during Mother's Day. Um, they like the, that's when they like to get started. Um, we do have a big event that is scheduled for the beginning part of May this year. Um, we have been given the opportunity to work with, um, the county or the Clear Creek County cleanup and combine that with the past event that we've done, which is the river cleanup. And then Rotary is also participating this year to link in.
Day of service.
Day of service. So it's becoming a big event that's going to be countywide working.
It's also the rafting season kickoff celebration.
Yeah.
And, uh, so it's a culmination of like five different things that have been kind of hanging out that have been going on for years, but we're going to combine them. And also kind of happy that we're combining it as a multi-city thing is Georgetown and Idaho Springs kind of working together. Uh, and the Rotary is getting in there and helping with that too, because most of the Rotary members are from Georgetown.
So that will be the first big event on, uh, minor this year. No, the May eighteenth event. Yeah.
It's like a full city cleanup.
Yeah.
Basically what happens is we have dumpsters in Citizen Park and then people can bring.
CRC Park.
Sorry, CRC Park. Um, people can bring, um, non-hazardous materials to, to dump at their residence.
It snowed a lot last year.
It snowed like several times since we've done this, but, but it, it's fine. It's always a good event. And then we also have trash bags. And, um, I already talked to Paul about that and we think we can source the same ones that we've gotten in the past. They're like big orange ones and people can go from the park, come get a bag and then they can go pick up trash around town. And then concurrently, the rafting companies will clean up in the river. And some years, Trout Unlimited comes to, but I haven't talked to them this year. But either way, then what we have always done in the past is some kind of like food intensive. And so we were talking with Steve about maybe, um, like eighty, like five dollar vouchers for this party that would happen on the marketplace that evening. But you'd have to come and do the pickup work to get one essentially. So you get the voucher and then you could go to the party.
Rotary Hubble man, the dumpsters, I talked to Doyle and he's committed to four dumpsters in Georgetown and three in Idaho Springs.
And the, and the oil trailer.
And the oil trailer, if you want to create a, figure out how to get that here and reuse more oil.
Geez, that's, that's great.
We do have one item of slight, like for council to consider about vocation of the dumpsters for Idaho Springs. And I mentioned that, um, I'll send you guys all an updated one, but Doyle is unsure. He cannot a hundred percent commit to that he can come. We're doing it on a Saturday. He's not a hundred percent committed that he can come and pick them up on Sunday. He's committed for sure that he will pick them up Monday. Our concern is leaving dumpsters unattended in CRC Park and figuring out a way to like block. You know, he doesn't care about people coming and throwing in like a bag of trash. He's more concerned about someone driving up and unhauling like, you know, oil drums, couches, whatever.
They absolutely will.
Yeah. So our, our alternative suggestion was would city council be open and willing to maybe allowing us to put the dumpsters in the city hall parking lot? Because then we can close it off and then we can block traffic.
I do that in Georgetown. Every year they, they just block out the parking lot and it's not going to trouble.
Yeah. Cause then they can't drive up and it's walk up trash, which is a lot less risky.
And he's still, he's trying to solve the problem. He's just not in town. They need to find someone else to pick them up and move them. And, um, we even talked about just moving them.
It's a shared access, the, uh, the city hall parking lot. So maybe the bank building, the new police station, um, might be an option depending on where we're at with construction at that point. But I think building right across the street here is, the new police station has a fairly large parking lot. And we can control the entire access to the property there.
I like that idea.
Yeah. Well, I, I think that's a really good idea. And also I like the, uh, uh, the visibility of location. A lot of our citizens will absolutely see those dumpsters and, and come and, uh, you know, get rid of their stuff. Like that's what's really good about CRC Park is visibility. Um, I, I think that would work out real well.
We do have a big banner for this too, that we made and we had at one point decided May eighteenth was the day forever. So we made a canvas banner.
Which works out this year that it happened to be the Day of Service and a bunch of things. So it's nice because we are looping in again, you know, per council suggestion, trying to loop in more, more things into one unit and, and more on the shoulder seasons. Again, this is the beginning of the season. Last year, just at the raft party alone, we had.
A hundred people showed up for the raft party. And when you turn, when people bring their orange bag back, they can get a coupon for a free drink ticket. John's been talking about buying some for other people. The rafters all get a meal ticket and two drink tickets. And they show up and we have Mark Morris's plane this year. And it's happens up front on the end of town over there. And there's some games set up and it's hangout. And it's the only time of year they pretty much all get together before the season starts. And then once the season starts, they're a little competitive. Um, uh, it's, it's fun. It's, it's also then the locals that come down and watch the rafters because they're
Enjoyable show all around.
So it'll be expanded with this year and we can figure out how to do this moving coverage. We do it for free for everybody.
We just talked about doing a five dollar voucher, like eighty of them. We may not give them all away, but the city has always bought breakfast burritos in about that amount. And just like, we're just incentivizing it just a little bit. And we have the money in our menu promotion budget for that.
We have some time to figure out how to make that incentive work and be effective to the right people. I'm not interested in incentivizing people to bring down their household trash and throw it away, but if they're picking it up from Creek or the towns, beautifying that's what we need to set up.
Absolutely.
We also have our flower day is in very close proximity and we could use the same thing and have like one party for all the volunteers. That's usually, well, I guess that's a little bit later. That's in June. Sorry.
Later. That's way in June. We got a full month before the flowers get here. Um, but what's nice about it is that in years past, we've been able, and I, I dug it out of the chamber files. Um, there's a map that shows like key areas for volunteers to pick up, which include all the parks and the greenway and the river trails. So we can update that with some of our updated things. And then we can hand that map out to the volunteers with a trash bag. And then if they turn back in that trash bag, they get a voucher that then they can go to the, the block party at the end of the day. Um, we're pretty confident this is going to work well. Uh, and hopefully this will be something we can just continue to repeat. Um, now that the Rotary is willing to, again, with all these events, it's always like, who's going to volunteer to help? Cause I think last year you were at the dumpsters the majority of the day. So this way it gives, you know, the volunteers are a part of a more participatory national day service.
And I will say, the city staff was absolutely remarkable and they were so helpful. I, I had several compliments from, uh, residents. Uh, you know, it just helped unloading the trucks and what didn't matter. Uh, what kind of filth they were bringing. I mean, uh, it was all, uh, a, a big effort to get them unloaded and I'm, I'm very thankful.
Yeah. So that will be, so if, again, I think the big guidance we'll need from city council as we move forward is just a decision from you guys of where you guys want the dumpsters to be. We've already got them secured. We'll just need to decide where they go. Uh, and then the marketing effort for this will start in, um, the middle part of April.
One thing I'll say with dumpsters, I did ask Chris Doyle, like, how much do they cost? Is there a fee if you want to do different kind of hazmat dumping or those? And every time he's like, oh, don't worry about that. I do this every year, but I could not get a number of.
So I want to say in years past, it's been about seven hundred and fifty. And that's all the, the fees and everything. And it was buy one, get one. So for us, it's like three seventy-five, which is sensational.
Yeah. And we can cover that cost. If you remember, we have a B that we get from plastic bags.
Yep.
And we have enough money in that account to pay for the dumpsters to stay over.
Then Barton Deb from the Realtor offered to pay for the trash bags. So I think he used the orange ones still so we can get them because then we can, it's easier for, to make sure they're part of them.
Yeah. Yeah. They've been, uh, pretty stout.
Oh, they're good bags, yeah.
I mean, yeah, I, I know I've abused them and they, they hold up.
Do you want, really briefly on the marketplace stuff? The big question I have is about the Fourth of July stage and I want to make sure you ask that. Do you want to talk about events a little bit and then, or do you want to just?
I'll just go through the events. Really, we have two parades on minor this year. Um, the seniors want to do a graduation parade again this year. They do want to have floats. Chief, this year they want floats.
Oh, not just cars?
Not just cars. Um, so thoughts on floats? Uh, I told them that we just needed to talk on that. Um, I think their idea of floats, from my understanding, is that the trailers that are being pulled behind a truck that they're going to decorate as a float. But I do believe they will have, they are asking if they can have people on said trailers being pulled behind said trucks.
One thing that might impact that and that we wanted to ask about as well is some of the encroachment areas, the encroachment area has always been twelve feet wide, but the encroachment area has always been designed to allow emergency access vehicles in.
Like one lot laying down.
Yeah. And so we've had some conversations recently about, there's places where there is activated space on one side of the street, but not on the other side of the street. And we, with the way that we design liquor premises, has some flexibility in what these spaces could actually be. And their quest was if, if, uh, business is like in agreement with the business on the other side of the street and they're not going to use it and they can put a bigger space and still provide the emergency access, would we necessarily care about that encroachment agreement, even though it'd be bigger than some of the other ones? And I think that, um, you know, I won't speak for fire anybody, but it sounds like we might be able to accommodate that like for emergency access. And so that is a question that we have about, about encroachment areas, if we're comfortable with that.
Yeah. And as we get into, as like last year, all encroachment agreements, once council says to John that you guys are cool with this, I will publish this calendar, um, to the business community. And then they'll start submitting their encroachment agreements to the city and to Warner and to John to review so that everybody is on the same page and obviously including um, police and fire and making sure that everyone is in. But it does always, all encroachment greens make sure that we can, and we have run parades down minor with the encroachment agreements, even if they have to, you know, go like this and then goes through, you know, and.
I would like it to not be super white. Like I think that potentially creates problems if there is a big dog leg. I don't know.
It would be approved by fire and PD.
That makes me nervous.
That would be the rule is it has to go through fire and PD and be like safe and all that kind of stuff, but.
And I would say it would be a one-off, like small. It wouldn't be everybody making that. I mean, there's not very many spots on minor where only one side is activated. In fact, most of minor, you have both sides activated. You only have a few areas where one side is activated and the others is not or never is. Um, so those are things. But the graduation parade with the floats is going to be the one thing to just pay attention to. Um, it would be May twenty third. Uh, then, um, the rec center with their skate day pop-ups, they're doing three pop-ups. Um, skate day pop-ups this year. I have confirmed that they're going to do them, um, on minor, not asking for any additional closures. Um, they have heard the feedback from the police and from, um, safety that they need to be farther away from the intersections with their ramps.
There'll be engagement for the state park design project that's part of that too. So.
Yeah. So they'll be out in front of Citizen Park on minor, but farther away from the intersections that there's safety there. The borough races will be on minor again, so there'll be a parade walking down minor. That's the beginning part of May. Um, one big event this year that is an addition to our bigger events, again, at the beginning part of our season before we're busy, um, Tommy Knockers is I'm going to be spearheading what's called Furling Fest, which is a knockoff of Oktoberfest, but it's for spring. You say it correctly.
It's for German. It's a German thing. Furling means spring in German. F R U H L I N G.
But we're going to call it furling because it's going to be a dog octo, a dog fest. So it's going to be. So it's gonna be um a fundraising uh event for Charlie's Place as well as other um.
Two or three dog adoption centers showing up, um veterinary, dog trainer, groomers. Things that will dive obstacle courses, we're trying to get interested, like use the new uh the dog jumping tank for dogs that jump.
We we got named live one of the best places to take your dog in Colorado and so it's a good opportunity for us to play on that a little bit.
Yeah, this will be an additional open container event um for minor in addition to Fourth of July. So this would be the only other event, it is a beer focused event as well, so. This would be the only other event that I would be requesting that we classify as a full open container, all of minor versus just block by block.
Also be allowing, like you did last year for the July, where a business could come out and have a stand up for, okay.
A hundred percent, as well as some non-competitive vendors, obviously, on minor. Also, at the beginning, I forgot to mention that, we do have commitment from some non-competitive vendors on minor this year about one time a month. Um they will be activating spaces that are not activated and or in front of Citizens Park. They're non-competitive businesses and I'm trying to aim them towards farmer's market style, again, we missed the missed the timeline on getting a full farmer's market. We need a full year to commit to getting a market manager and we have to have a market manager for. We have to hire in a market manager to run a farmer's market in the state of Colorado, you can't just run it one off, it doesn't work very well. But I do have some pop-up um farm vendors that are willing to come, the people that sit at the bottom of the the. Parkway. Yeah, so they're willing to come in and do like little pop-up tents once a month, um. So those are happening and we'll get more details on those exact people and when they're coming, they'll all be licensed Idaho Springs Business License. So they will carry Idaho Springs Business License.
And axe throwing wants to come.
Yep, axe throwing wants to return again, they have made improvements to their axe throwing trailer, it is now more secure and it's an upgraded version. It was a big hit last year, so it will be back again, it will be back for all the big events, um as well as a couple of pop-off um weekend events as well.
Sadie, what was the date of Furling Fest?
Furling Fest is actually June eighth, that's a correction from your guys', it was June first on your guys'.
Really syncs well with flowers.
Yeah, it does, flowers will be installed right before that, so it's gonna be flowers and dogs and John and I are gonna make sure our flowers look so beautiful. And it will be a fun event. Um music on minor will happen again this year, we are confirming with all of the businesses who wants to be what date, so. Um John and I will finalize that calendar for the Coda so that we know um who's where when. Um but we will have music again on minor.
And then really quick, on the Fourth of July, I had, we had thought we had a deal for like a five thousand dollar stage.
I remember.
That is not a reasonable thing, we can't get it done.
We do still have the possibility of using the original quote. Um so we, so we can still secure the original quote we received.
We can get a stage and sound for like ten thousand dollars, but I have shopped it around now and the best deal is ten thousand dollars. And so it really underscores this need for us to buy our own stage. But right now, we haven't found one that's closer than Tenscola, Florida, and I think we need to get across the finish line on getting a stage so we can finish depicting bands and everything. So I, yeah, I'm down, I'm, I'll do it, I just, you know, I don't wanna get down there and find something that's been, you know, doctored up on eBay basically, but. Um either way, I, we we really need to buy a stage, but. But I think that we might wanna consider just getting this, it's from a company that Mark Morris is very familiar with and, you know, he's Iowa Springs guy, he's gonna get his best deal he could possibly get. And he also can help take care of the sound for us, so we'll have what we need to have the event and then I think we need to just. We need to put our, we really need to find a stage and it's just they've been.
We need to find a stage for like three years, so this is, this is all going down.
You know what, Central City has one and they don't, and they don't use it.
They won't let us use it anymore, I'm not sure, they have a new arts and entertainment activation plan that. Says that their stage is committed for all things, but I'm, I don't. John and I have both tried to ask if we could use the stage for Fourth of July this year, we both got a very hard no. Um even offering to pay to use the stage and we both got a very hard no. We do still have.
Thank you for that.
If it'd be.
We do still have the original quote, although it came in significantly, it's eighty-nine hundred.
Which is the best deal we've had, I think everything else was ten to fifteen.
So we do.
He just got a contact.
Context, he works with a company that that does it.
Yeah, it's his, it's the same company that does rapid grass every year, um the same sound company that does rapid grass every year also owns uh one of those. Trailer stages that just.
Sounds like a business they should go in.
I know, well, the city could probably rent it out at this point and make up the money and pretty quick, cuz there's nobody that has them.
So it is Fourth of July, that is the big thing, is if that is a council decision for you guys to make it, we do have that original. Quote, we had, John and I were a little concerned that we lost our, lost our position in line, but um Mark said that we're good.
And that's also why we should, we, if we could get it done, it would be.
It would be helpful to have it secured so that, and on that, we do have the. Because we're aware that if that's more expensive, it cuts into our budget, I did speak to Mark about that and he's willing and. He he says he's perfectly capable of filling within the budget a good band lineup. That can help, so he's willing to help us fill the band lineup as well, fitting within our, what's left in the remaining budget for Fourth of July. So that would be the second open container event on minor um of the year. Um always as problems on Fourth of July is parking. So conversations about parking and if we can figure out shuttles or how to move people around on Fourth of July is always.
Do we ever get, um. We used to have uh. Um National Guard people, cuz I know I had to drive through town unfortunately, Fourth of July last year. And it was not, it was not a pretty event, like, it's not, I'm like, did you just kick my car, I mean, it was bad and I'm like. It was just, it was this close to chaos. There's still control, but it was this close to chaos.
It's not National Guard, it's the.
Rangers.
The Rangers, yeah.
We try to call it National Guard.
The Rangers almost.
No, I don't see like.
I mean, there's, Chief's always got the the Rangers, there's one, there's um one lives in town. Right now, which is great, and then we've always got the extra sport and then we always have like a barbecue at the hall for them.
Usually we have six, six Rangers.
Yeah.
Yeah, and volunteers in reserves too, right?
Yeah, and we we've always done, last year, we didn't really have any like big. Super problematic uh crime issues or anything, it's just, it's just a lot of people and so we've talked about um. Potential for other parking areas that we can use maybe and work out deals with people and then the shuttle, we always have the rec center run the shuttle. And if they are able to do it, which we think they are this year, we can, that opens up like the whole East End.
What about Roundabout?
They might, but they're gonna be expensive.
They'll bill us for that?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Well, the Roundabout, it's funny, I just talked to Kenny, the Roundabout is like a million bucks a year right now. That's what they're running?
Roundabout has primarily been funded through grants to this point.
Like eighty percent of it is funded through grants, but they were uh, they were telling me that.
How about that, how about, how about we call Crystal or somebody at the level?
Well, I mean, those.
We get a couple of shuttles, man.
If we could, if they uh, we paid, we've paid the guys at Rec Center to run it before, if they would be willing to do that, that'd be a good auction, a good idea, cuz we could just pay their drivers, maybe they'd. Cuz we just need somebody, I think they're, they're top, so I don't think you need a C D L for them.
No, but why don't we call like Stopper or somebody, you know, somebody with a little pull up and loving and have them run the main, main shuttles, man.
I'll, I could reach out to them and see what they could do, yeah, dude, okay.
I can talk to Sean too.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
And what's intriguing about the shuttles is if we can, what what I noticed last year, which was probably the first year I noticed, is that if we can market. Um that there are other really awesome places to watch the fireworks, such as like CRC Park is an actual excellent spot to watch the fireworks. And like, if we can market that we can spread people out a little bit, so it's not so many people condensed down on minor. That maybe we'll feel a little bit better about it.
I have a springs, there's no bad seats.
Yeah, exactly, something and and maybe a map that shows, you know, where we can spread people. Because again, it does get very congested in in the downtown district for sure and obviously parking is an issue. The nice thing about having managed parking is we aren't experiencing what we did in years past where people sit and park all day and tailgate in the back. And Chief did a great job this year, like really watching the back parking lots, making sure people weren't out in the back lots, just drinking out in the back lots. So um it does help in that way. We will have again full, full day of of activation that day, so music will start at eleven and go until dark. Obviously fireworks dependent on weather, um.
We've been trying to add kid activities too, like some kind of thing more fun for kids.
Yeah, the bouncy house, we'll get the bouncy house in from the rec center, it would be cool to figure out a dunk tank, we had that a couple of years ago. That was pre-COVID, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was like the year before, Andy was in it.
I know, I remember, I remember Andy being in it, I I remember that very much. Um so, you know, those kinda things, um I think Argo said they'll bring down their fold panning. Again, non-competitive things to spread it out and all the restaurants on minor, you know, trying to do stuff to, again. Spread out the crowd as much as possible, it is one of the busiest days we have all year, it's just a little awkward in the cry of crowd management.
I think, we have one more item on the agenda, I think the other really big thing we need to talk about is opening the street. We, we have always closed the street at, closed the pedestrian mall on Halloween, basically, that's the last big event.
Yep.
And then we do a teardown and a cleanup auction. This year, we've been contemplating, in the past, we haven't had a really bad ice year until this year, but this year was bad on minor with ice. And it made the outdoor areas not as usable as they have in the past. We have been contemplating just not having um. Outdoor dining areas this year on Minor Street and I think we could still talk about whether we want it one way.
Yeah, you're talking that in the winter.
Yeah, we probably still, we, I guess we'd wanna talk about that if it wants to be one way or two-way, but we were talking about. It would just be a seasonal thing right now and then we probably, if we wanted to have an off-season event, we still have all the stuff where we can close off a block or something. Like we did for Bojo's last year, but that way we're not gonna be impacting public works, being able to clean up around the areas and stuff.
And I can tell you that of the um businesses that are um that are activating, everyone is in agreeance that. Until we are in the stages of the downtown master plan, everybody is comfortable with not activating during the winter. Um so.
That's good.
So they'll be okay, even the folks that are.
Yeah, nobody.
This year, they.
Yeah, nobody would be upset by it, um everybody understands, everybody's excited for what's to come in the future, so everybody's fine waiting. As long as we can continue to do spring and summer. As well as John and I are working on trying to find some things in the off-season where we can close, we can do activation during the winter, but and. All of the businesses that are currently activating during the off-season are not, are not adverse to it going. I have heard though that most people would like it to remain one way. Um it's become.
Yes.
It's become something that they're used to, it also does, I don't know why, but it does slow people down when they're driving one way, um.
Well, and there's parking on both sides, free, one way.
Yeah.
Like that's appealing to, you know. Except, right, exactly, so I do people like that too, yeah.
Public works, if we do one way, don't have.
It won't, it will require a little better signage, especially if we don't have barricades and things out there, we'll need, let's up, put up some better signage. That do not enters, things of that nature.
Cuz without us, you're creating a lot of the.
It's just.
Well, especially on that, on the south side.
Yeah, this is the first year in a while it's been.
Yeah.
This has been worse than any in the last couple of years.
Do you guys have any questions about marketplace stuff, we can come back and talk more um.
I do actually, cuz we didn't talk about it, we highlighted a piece.
Yes.
Where the Chamber would like to suggest that if a business would like to activate, they have to be a member of the Chamber, it's a public street.
Yeah, and it's an activation thing, it just, I, as council, I've asked from the Chamber before and and this has just been sitting something, you know. As the director of the Chamber, I manage all this program, the city pays me or pays the Chamber. And then I'm doing all this administration, it's just a way, like, there's a lot of people asking, you know, they're activating this, it's the city's. Right, they're not paying to activate this, you know, should they be paying to activate it? Should they, you know, what's the skin in the game to make sure that they're maintaining their spaces, what's their skin in the game to make sure that they're, you know, a lot of the. They're doing big improvements to their spaces every year, some are not, some are not maintaining them at all and they end up looking. Really trashy by the end of the summer, so like, how do we incentivize them to have skin in the game in that? So that they, you know, know that this is a benefit to them, that we, it came out of COVID, it was great. Now, how do we make sure that they have their skin in it as well and they're not just taking advantage of the space being used for free?
I don't see a problem with them using it for free, I really, because again, it's a public city sidewalk, it's public city streets. Parking pays for all that stuff, like we're paying for all that stuff.
Well, kinda, the the business owners have to maintain.
Well, but, well, they can maintain it, like, they're gonna be, if you're down here, like, you're welcome to use this, this is free of charge, but you have to maintain it. Or fines come in your direction.
Yeah, do we have coordinators?
But.
There is.
All right, and.
It needs to happen, it's, we need to have a.
It, and didn't they have to pay for the maintenance, didn't, did that pass, where, or was that a? It it, I was running of.
Can you, I'm, we need to say that one more time.
Remember Jonathan, when, when, and I don't know if it, if it ever made it or passed or whatever, but. That each business front was responsible for any of their.
Yeah, I gotcha, I know where you're going, we, that did pass, but we didn't do anything with it? We, we never assessed the the fee, so that district.
From the ci- the special.
Yeah, but that's, that was, yeah, well, yeah. But that's what he's saying is, we created that district and that was kind of like one of the things that we had talked about. What we need to do with using, there's two, basically, here's what city policy questions there are. One, these encroachment areas are free, I think we wanna continue that, like have them be free so they're accessible, it helps the city a lot and it's something we wanna continue. We wanna incentivize these businesses to use the space because it makes minor street special, honestly. But what we really need to do, and you see it kind of happening with this ice, is that we need to make sure they're being maintained. Because Paul can't get in there, I mean, he's not ability to use the street sweeper and clean the street, so we need to make sure that. That trash is being picked up appropriately and that like, you know, sand and all these things are getting cleaned up. And that when we put uh, what we really don't have that might be beneficial to us is some kind of design process to look at these spaces. We have a couple of, uh all of our businesses, I think one thing that makes it really great is that it's eclectic, I think that makes it look. Like Idaho Springs frankly and in a good way. Um but what we need to do is just be able to say, hey, maybe uh you should clean up the dirt, that spell out of your plant or whatever, or whatever, maybe don't use this as a, you know, like. There's, there's, there's maybe an opportunity to build standards like we do for every other structure that's put up. And that might be a bigger question and a bigger policy thing that we need to come.
I like the idea of standards and I like, I mean, people don't change unless it becomes more painful for them to stay status quo versus the change. So you have to, unfortunately, it has to be a punitive measure, but I don't like the idea that you have to join another organization, nothing against change, just.
No, I, this is, I'm supporting another organization.
I think that idea behind that is the Chamber is spending a lot of money to do the management of this.
It's just my time, that's all, it's, it's just me.
And we're not, yeah, we're not really, yeah. We're not really, the city isn't spending the cost of management for the Chamber because it's, it's me doing part of it, but it's also Sadie. And the Chamber does.
They pay more in state.
Well, that, that's kinda like the thought here, but that's how the Chamber makes money, is through memberships.
We should.
Yeah, and so.
But maybe that's a bigger conversation.
It just becomes this weird thing where like in the middle of the summer, I'm spending more of my time enforcing, like, guys, like, come on, like, can we not?
That actually should be, that should be, that should be city though, that should be city, yes.
Well, that should be city one hundred percent.
Well, it just.
It doesn't functionally work though because of the way the relationships are.
Yeah.
And so what we need to do is, and maybe, maybe what we need to do is have another work session to talk about the Chamber. How we manage this space and like how this all works. And one of the things we've talked about is maybe Maria can start participating more in these efforts and so maybe what. We really need to do is pause on that idea and then come back with a, like, management kind of.
Well, I'm all for like, how do we, how do we fund better the person who is running this, because it does take up a lot of your time. You know, I don't discount that, please don't take I do, I don't.
Oh, no, I, I think the only reason it was brought up is that. The Chamber and, you know, the Chamber doesn't have a lot of extra money and so.
Yeah, it is, the importance of the members that are in that to get, I understand, to double it short.
Yeah, and so all, more than anything, I wanted to prompt council to understand that what happens is. I spend a lot of my time, John spends a lot of his time, both from the city and again, the Chamber and helping make this happen. How do we make sure that the businesses have skin in it as well?
I think though this needs to be, like, if they wanna do the Coda, this needs to be, you have standards, just like we do, I like the idea of you have standards with everything.
I think it quits, you know, at the end of the day, no matter what, what is your time?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring something back of, like some kind of idea back based on that.
Cuz I can see, like, my initial response was, oh, you have to join another organization in order to utilize the space in front of the business.
Like a special district.
Yeah, well, it's not even that, it's just, you shouldn't have to join it, like, this should be between the businesses and the city.
Right.
You know, or, I don't know, like, it just, my initial reaction wasn't positive, so.
I get what you're saying too, at least for sure.
I think that other people may have a similar response.
Well, why don't, why don't I uh, we'll talk a little bit, maybe I can bring that back for a work session item later, cuz that's not a really critical.
No, I just wanted to make sure, I bring it up every year, it's not the first time it's been on this.
I'll tell you something, Sadie, that comes along with my whole idea, we actually need to have a better, like, we need to have an enforcement department in the city. That deals with all of our, you know, laws and ordinances and residences. That deals with all of our, you know, laws and ordinances and resolutions. Of how people are supposed to be operating and living and taking care of their bits in the city.
Not me no more.
We have, there is, uh.
Yeah, thank you, my man.
Well, is there anything further on special events? If not, I'll move to our last item. Which is utility billing.
Okay, well, Mayor Council, this item, I gave you a letter on your table that we'd like to send to all water and sewer users. Um, as you guys know, we've been for the last eighteen months engaged in some pretty heavy duty work on our. Thank you. Water and sewer billing systems that have been. Um. They, they needed to be modernized and audited and a lot of things that needed to happen to make sure they're correct. And verified. And you may have heard from people that some people on this last billing got bills higher than anticipated. It was an operational error on staff's part. And so this letter is an attempt to try to explain what happened, which is basically, uh, there was two errors in January. Um. The base rate was applied to all accounts, but not additional charges. And that was due to like trying to fix an error that we had in the system and it popped up unexpectedly. And then in March, uh. There was a situation that caused March and January bills to show on the March bill regardless. And so what we've done is tried to proactively fix this. All of the accounts have been fixed. If a person has expressed bill pay, which is a digital portal, they'll see that already. But if they'll have a paper statement, they may not. And we have already talked to, and I don't know which one has a better idea of this, but I'd say. The majority of people, probably the majority of people have this issue already. So that's already been contacted by city hall. And so things are fixed. We didn't apply any late fees to anything. Um, we've also, uh. Taken a couple of preventative measures. As you know, Reptolus is working with us. They're our financial advisory firm that works on utility stuff. And they're auditing our system and our personal practices to make sure that we're doing what needs to happen. We've also been replacing meters throughout the system, which is really good because that's going to make sure that we're. Using equipment that actually works with the tools that we need to work with. And then we've also been, um, we've taken steps in, in staff management to make sure that. When bills are prepared, they're proactively verified and this never happens again because we do have the ability to make. Um, manual corrections. So what I was trying to do is write a letter, um, this is coming from Patty, she's the utility billing clerk, but. And so we were working on writing a letter that is forthright and explaining what happened and just kind of making sure that people know. Um, where we are and what we've done to address the problem. One other thing that we'd like to do this letter, if we could get this out next week, it'd be really great. Or this week is when we want to send it out, probably about next week by printing time. But Ed also has a survey document that could go with this letter and we can take advantage of the mailing. And basically what that does is it gives people an opportunity to tell us about their heights, so that when we do lead surveys. Um, and things like that to the system, we have an idea of what people have in their house or what they think they have at least. And so we can maybe collect that data as well at the same time. So that's what this letter is intended to do. Um, I'm here to answer questions that you have and.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Because I've heard from four constituents that called me and said, Lisa, can we talk? And I was like, sure, what's going on? And all four of them were utility bill. I'm like, come to council. Come talk to Patty.
Business residents.
Um. One resi- two bi- two businesses, two residences. So it was both, like.
Cause I have the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this has taken a ton of staff time, I'm sure, right? Also, these mailings, I don't know what it costs for these mailing, but we've had several mailings and I have like ten accounts, so I get ten of these. And the city's paying for ten mailings.
Right, to you.
But, I mean, that they could try to figure out which ones are mine and give me one mailing, that's all I need, but.
They're.
Or is there an email option that we?
Much more expensive to do that because we got to print address labels and our current. Our current permit allows us to just send. On, like to the, the.
To the resident.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
On, on it, on a pink postage.
Right, it's gotta be, it's gotta be like sorted, which is like significantly more expensive, basically.
So it's easier just to not send me one and send me ten, you mean?
Yeah, it's cheaper, but it, I know it's dumb, but it's.
What about email options? Do we have where people can sign up for email options on all these mailings? Cause.
We can do that. Yeah.
If we've gotten in a new technology, we should be able to have people, customers sign up for email options and say, I don't want to get the postage.
Well, we do have this. Through the, through the payment company, shouldn't there be a something that you can, I mean, obviously getting an email.
Yes. We just don't have a high enough usage rate on there yet to like say no, we're done.
That's a hard question. How many people are using, uh?
There's like, it's in my staff report, but it's like. Four or five hundred or something like that.
Cause I'm, I use it.
That seems like a good trash up for someone to be like, oh no, my email changed two months ago.
Yeah, we need to.
And that, you know, well, I didn't get it, so that's not fair to me.
Yeah.
Well, no, if you're on auto pay.
Yeah, but you're signing, you're signing a consent.
That's right, you, you're on auto pay.
And you change your email.
That's your responsibility.
That's your responsibility.
I ain't on auto pay.
Well, what I'm saying is that the people that are on auto pay have consented to have the bill taken out of the bank, which is why you receive an email in the first place.
Well, sure, and you love that case and they're just gonna get it out of their bank whether they got it emailed or a, or a mailer, doesn't matter.
And all those. All the, all the people who use the online system, express bill pay, they've already all been notified through the system and it does that. And you can see like, it's a really cool tool because you can actually see your usage on there.
Sure.
So you can see like month over month.
Sure.
But, but just, we just have only been implementing it for like nine even a year yet, so we just haven't got.
Right.
Enough people to.
But the point I was trying to make is that there's no excuse for, I mean. The city's got your money because they got your account, everything. They, they don't have that, like what, what Scott was just saying. Well, yeah, my email changed, so I didn't get it.
Right, we, we'd rather.
Right, so that's not fair for me to pay the bill.
So that system, I don't want to get sidetracked, but that system, I think Patty was saying is five dollars per account, so. For me to sign up ten accounts with five dollar fee each month, I'd sign up for it in a minute, but.
Why do you want to pay that?
I mean, I don't want to pay an extra fifty dollars or something.
It costs five dollars. Well, no.
Well, it's not, it's.
It doesn't cost anyone's.
It doesn't cost anything.
Okay.
Oh, no, I was just saying.
They take a, they get their fees through a, there is a, there's a transaction cost, but it's not five dollars. I don't know.
Into transactions.
It's only a dollar.
I think, I think the smarter one has the answer. I can speak of the transaction fees. There's no fee to just being enrolled in general.
Okay.
If you pay the bills with electronic check, there's a one dollar transaction fee.
Per.
Per account. Credit cards have a three point five percent fee, so the electronic check is much, it's much trubal.
But you could still receive your bills through express bill pay for free and just pay them. Either.
You could.
Yeah, come in and walk in.
Through the system, yeah. Or just pay cash or whatever.
Yeah, or come in here and pay.
Yeah.
Paul, you've been very patient. Did you have something that you wanted to add to this? Well, I, I think what the emailing was trying, you were trying to get away from putting out all these mailers and maybe having a dual service there, but. We get back to, um. John's point and then, then we would have to, if we're trying to remove some of those mailers. Now we're into printing address labels, which is a higher cost for mailing.
I see.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Versus just residents.
Not a good way to do that.
We want to switch over to, if we could switch over to do an email all the time, it would be the ideal situation. But until like, we're like.
Till our system could.
Yeah, and we've been working on that. That's like been a major thing Sess done. Over the last kind of couple of months and Patty's been pretty good about that, but we've got, we eventually like to make it where when you sign up for a new account and you go paperless, that's the fault.
Yeah, yeah.
But we just, in our community, it's hard to.
I think you did some.
It's a, it's just the demographic of our neighborhood. I mean, you're evergreen as way ahead of us. Just, uh, just from working at the school, I know.
And how much does a mailer cost us?
You're like twenty-five or three thousand.
Yeah, I don't know if it's exact, man, but.
Don't go, aren't, yeah, am I, am I way off or?
I want, I want to say the lot, I'm not positive. It's not.
There are lots.
It's not a ton, it's not that high. I think, I want to say eight hundred dollars less than they. But it's, it's still significant because.
But that's better than that with.
We can get the cost down if we stuff them ourselves, but that's like a.
That's staff time.
Yeah, well, yeah, what's that cost?
I don't care if they say.
Well, yeah, what's that worth?
You know, the last two hundred have blood all over them.
And then you have pissed off employees and you don't want to get more.
There you go.
Exactly.
Chuck's like, oh my God, we're just bombing.
Are there, uh, anything else on the building?
Well, sure.
Um, you know, uh. I would like to take five minutes for a comfort break before our regular meeting. I would also like to give council a heads up that the, uh. River Sound Project, which is the theater building next to Citizen Park. Uh, they will be going for, uh, some serious grant money to restore the building. And, uh, they are going to ask if council would be amenable to. A letter of support. Again, this is for the restoration of the building. We're not talking about some of the more controversial aspects.
The interior, I guess.
Well, yeah, and in this case, stabilization of, uh, of the structure, uh, for example, will, will be one of them. Do you need building out the basement? Uh, no, but I think they, they are.
There's a problem with the third story. They didn't build it correctly and they need to stabilize the, the structure a little bit.
So it's gonna be, uh, e- expensive, uh, there, that's why they're going for some pretty serious, uh, grant money. And I just wanted to give council a heads up that they'll, they'll be inquiring and I'm, I'm sure we'll have an opportunity. To ask more of, uh, what their intention is.
My question would just be who else is doing.
Letter of support isn't gonna give them free reign to.
Oh, no.
Go against planning.
No, 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 no.
My question is just who else is looking for that same, that whole second deadline? Cause I know the hot springs are, River Sound is, aren't we as a city like?
Yeah, the.
My concern is who else is looking for a piece of the pie? Cause it's not a unlimited pie.
Right.
HPRC is supposed to review grant applications, but. Excuse me, practice that hasn't happened. And we probably need to have a conversation about that because strategically there's some.
Then it, it will be good. In fact, uh, let me, I will make a point of letting them know, uh, uh, requesting they go to HPRC with the, uh. Uh, what they'd like to do with grant.
Isn't that part of our COA that they have to come?
All right, well, everybody take five and we'll see you here in a little bit.
For the grant as well?
Chuck, how you doing?
I'm pretty good, I mean.
Oh, good. Oh, good. Catching up on the breastplate, we can. Let's go really fast. Seems, that seemed to.
Great.
Yeah, well, this is, so if they're back here, then we're just mushing everybody. John. My concern is who else is asking, cause I know.
We didn't, and I still like that.
Yeah, well, I was gonna send the email up.
Now, hot springs is charging by higher hot spring prices on the kids.
It's just, we don't. Hey.
Well, the iron now.
It took like thirty seconds.
Well, that, I think that'd be awesome.
Cause you're realizing how much the bills are gonna be.
I just wanted to get that out there before I forgot.
Okay, well, thank you. You got to do the same thing, yeah. You could almost like.
Shovel it's no one's, say, Mary's, go on, go back up there.
Okay.
Yeah, well.
I told my wife the same thing. I said, I'll have to, everything I have to shovel, shovel in here.
What are you shoveling? Most people should be shoveling.
Well. I got a little pain delivery and there's just no way they're.
Yeah.
And it's normally not up in front.
Hey, Gene.
Sure.
He's not driving.
Oh, yeah, right now, uh, well, yeah.
Yeah, cause there's actually no, uh, on the, on the. No, in fact, he did. It's fine with the spring. But.
About use of water or.
Yeah, actually, she has some, yeah, some. Well, it's the only, uh, thing.
It's a different use of.
So it doesn't, doesn't. That's the only.
That's. A building isn't sufficient size coming across.
My daughter. That we don't have to, and that, that won't be anything to do with us for, uh, using it for parking.
Mayor, Carmine and Gary are on line two. I, I do so long.
So we have flexibility.
Sure. And we have, Mayor, we have Carmen and Gary Moore as well.
Or. Weird. Is Carmen on the, is she on the?
Yeah, she's here.
Carmen?
If you can hear me, just delete my email and put it back in and see if that works. I think, I have no idea. Yeah. Uh, Paul, what's the word on the street and how much snow we're gonna get?
All of it. All of it.
When, when are we getting that? Wednesday and Thursday. It's going to start Wednesday afternoon, Wednesday morning. And it will go all this Thursday again.
We did that for two years.
I'm not anti-snow, I'm just, I wanted to get on the train and go away.
I was like, I don't know if I want to last year.
You can't take it up a burden pass in the snow.
Thank you for this break, yeah, this like, this really helped.
Oh, well, what are you gonna do? Did this, did they, did they do this to all of them, sir?
Talk a little bit about. Um, there's.
All, everyone's to that?
Yeah, he's on his way back up.
I didn't even look at it.
All right. And Jonathan, I was just gonna, we're, we're good to go when Jimmy gets here, right?
Yes, sir. We're actually not muted at the moment.
All right. Sorry, y'all.
There's too many girls ahead of me.
You know, just have to just throw it right back on the lady, didn't you?
Well, I would like to welcome everyone to the, uh, March eleventh, twenty twenty-four regular session, uh, for the City of Vinod Hill Springs. And, uh, we will call it to order at, uh. Seven twelve. And, uh, we'll start with roll call, please. Scott Fennell. Here. Lisa Manifault.
Here.
Jim Clark. Here. Janine Mariani.
Here.
Kate Collier, here. Jeremy Jones. Here. Mayor Chuck Harmon. Here. Thank you. All, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. All, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. We have an agenda before us today and uh, I would like to offer the uh, slight modification. Under the uh, two contracts under resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance first reading ordinance number eight and ordinance number nine. You will notice that these uh, contracts are virtually the same other than a legal description and price. Uh, there is a date error. If you look uh, on page eight, about the top third. Page eight of the contract says, if the city fails to exercise the option to purchase prior to December thirty first, twenty twenty.
Oh.
The right to purchase the lease premises shall terminate. Uh, this uh, should be changed to prior to December thirty first, twenty twenty seven. And both contracts say the same thing, uh, essentially in the same spot.
I would move to approve the agenda for March eleventh, twenty twenty four with the addition, with the changes to um, both of the ordinances to reflect the appropriate for twenty twenty seven versus twenty twelve.
Well, thank you, Lisa. And do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, the second from Kate. And um, any further discussion of the agenda? All right, all those in favor, uh, uh, please raise your right hand and signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, uh, does anyone tonight feel they have a conflict of interest? Because I do. It's pretty uh, pretty rare, but I do and I will be uh, and I will be honored to hand the gavel. Uh, to Jeremy on, under uh, ordinance number nine, series twenty twenty four, when we get there. And um, there's anyone else uh, feel they have a conflict of interest tonight? All right, hearing none, uh, I'll move on to the minutes. And do I have a motion?
Approve the minutes on February twenty sixth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Jeremy. And do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Scott and uh, any discussion of the minutes? Uh, hearing none, all, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll go to the move, the move to the uh, to the, on to the bills. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the bills to March eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Jimmy. Do I have a second? A second from Jeremy. Uh, any uh, discussion of the bills?
Yes, I have a couple, just a couple of questions.
Sure.
Uh, on the first page of the bills, what is the um, Brown Hill Engineering SCADA leasing agreement?
SCADA.
SCADA.
Leasing agreement. Does it say water and wastewater?
Yeah, it does says water treatment and wastewater treatment.
All right, that's for Brown Hill maintains and um, leases the computer equipment.
Okay.
That runs and does remote access to the water and wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
The water treatment plant one is significantly more than the wastewater plant.
Yeah, it is.
Because uh, we just had those PLCs upgraded.
Okay.
So what they did was they just split the payment up amongst twenty six months.
Oh.
And then at the end of twenty six months, dish, that's gonna go away and then it's gonna go back down to where the, where the wastewater is.
So approximately sixteen hundred-ish.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then uh.
And would you remind us what the PLCs are?
The program, programmable logical controller, programmable logic controller.
Just the, 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 just what that is?
Right, so it, it holds all the logics that like opens the, opens and closes the valves, runs the pumps. Uh, VFDs maintains tank levels, it stores data for um, chlorine and turbidity readings that we would report to the state. Anything that has, is automated control in, in the water plant or the wastewater, actually.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with that stuff and it's automation of everything is logic tied to a computer, so. Everything automated ties to computer controls.
Makes life easier.
Well.
It's the only way.
It's the only way it's gonna work without physically being there.
All right, and Ed, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thanks, Ed. Good explanation.
Do we have an option to buy that equipment initially, but this is the best option or?
After the, after the payment plan is over, we do own the equipment.
Oh, so it's lease, lease option buy.
Basically.
Exactly.
That's right, yeah.
Basically, yeah.
And it'll still be good at, at the time, won't be, I'm sorry, at least.
No, just we update software and.
They take care of the software for us.
So totally up capable for another decade at least.
Right, well, the, the last PLC system that was in the plant lasted for twenty, twenty years? Twenty years?
Yeah, that's awesome.
So I don't see any reason why this one wouldn't last twenty more.
Yeah, and, and still, yeah, software and update compatible, just keep rolling on with it.
Right, I would expect maybe like the wastewater plant stuff may wind up finding more failures than the water treatment plant. Just because of the, the environment that it's in.
Sure.
So it's got like hydrogen sulfide and corrosive environment and no matter how sealed you can keep those boxes. They still wind up getting a lot of corrosion on the.
Ed, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for, that was what I wanted to know, cause I didn't know what it was, so. And my other question is, what are we doing? It's on page um, page eight. Is this uh, to space ink for the play park? Is that a design?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's a conceptual design for the park that we've talked about, um, just to kind of figure out the, the layout of it and everything. I think. By and large, that process is largely wrapped up for the whole park.
Okay, that was it. Thank you for allowing me to do the question.
All right, any uh, further questions on the bills?
The only thing I might uh, add to that is on the play park is that also included a, a budget, public engagement aspect to it as well, trying to get feedback from the community.
That was the meetings that we had earlier?
Yes, what they'd like to see and what the kids would like to see. Uh, we had a discussion about whether to expand the footprint of the play park and that sort of thing. So we're really trying to figure out. What are our options for uh, redeveloping a park, making improvements there.
How close to the end of that plan are you?
Probably, from a conceptual standpoint, I think we're. Yeah, probably, at least. We're, we're almost to the point where we could start looking at grant funding opportunities.
All right, any further questions to the bills? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. All right, uh, public comment, we did have someone signed up. Uh, is Duke online perhaps?
No.
Okay. Um, well, uh, we don't have anything under uh, city board appointments, uh, correct?
We do not, Mayor, I should remove that.
Oh, that's okay. And um, nothing uh, with the finance officer tonight. Um, we will move on to resolutions, starting with resolution number four. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve, approve resolution number four, series twenty twenty four, a resolution of the city council of Idaho Springs, Colorado, supporting the exploration and potential. Formation of a multi jurisdictional housing authority and HNA in Quikbey County, the alliance with the city's strategic housing goals and objectives.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second? A second from Jeremy. And uh, any discussion?
No discussion, but I would like to say thank you to staff, cause I can tell that you really took the discussion that we had about this and I see it reflected in the resolution, which I appreciate. Like, it's very specific.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Anything further?
Can I, am I, is there a kid I recommend a person for John to look into to be on this housing authority?
I, I, sure.
I'm, I'm asking permission. I'm.
I, I, I think that would be fine.
Autumn Rose.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
She's been involved in the project already and I think she's very good advocate for that stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. I think she'd be great at, at least bringing her expertise.
And I, I would add that I think uh, Kate is right. She's very passionate and she's particularly. Uh, plugged in with uh, folks in uh, mobile home parks and as it relates to the Colorado mobile home park act.
And she's advocated, I'd say tirelessly. She's a champion for those people.
Yeah, and I think that her having the understanding of what is going on in that conversation would be a great bridge for us.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially Idaho Springs.
Thank you.
Yep, I, I appreciate that as well. Uh, anything further? Uh, then uh, hearing no uh, further comments, a roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. Uh, moving to resolution number five, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution number five, series two thousand twenty four, a resolution approving the Virginia Canyon Mountain Park, BCMP, master plan, addendum number two.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second from Jimmy. And uh, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And uh, we'll move to ordinance first reading, starting with ordinance number eight. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number eight, series twenty twenty four, ordinance approving a lease and purchase option agreement for a, for that certain real property known as eighteen fifty six Carl Boulevard. I have a finished close.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Uh, uh, a second from Lisa. And uh, any discussion?
May I ask if we have, is this, are we basing this on the plan that we discussed in our work session? Where we wanna turn this into employee parking? Like, cause I, like, I'm, I'm totally behind that. I just wanna make sure that that is our stated goal.
And Lisa, uh, not to split hairs, but I would just uh, say it's more defined as parking and we haven't necessarily mandated uh.
Employee parking, fair enough.
Right. Uh, it does give us the opportunity uh, to secure surface parking for approximately fifteen thousand dollars per space. And uh, there's no value being assigned to the buildings. The owner is fine if, if it ends up getting scraped for a parking lot. The owner is also fine, you may have noticed in the lease that. Uh, we are free to lease the, in the meantime, uh, for thirty six months. And that actually helps bring down the purchase price. You wanna look at that, cause we'll, we'll have the revenue for thirty six months.
Right.
Uh, carrying it at five percent as Mr. Anderson has offered. Uh, I'm only pointing out that we get about five percent in our, our bank account, so that is essentially like a free. Uh, loan, but in him doing it over three years, it allows us to actually pay for this asset out of our.
So I appreciate, I liked that it was broken up.
Uh, and uh, the timeliness of this, of course, is because. We're gonna be tearing up a parking lot in the not-too-distant future and all likelihood, uh, that is gonna create a real um, issue. Um, so no, this, this, it doesn't solve at all, but it, at least it, it helps.
It eases.
It eases.
So, I have a question to chuck in.
Sure.
I've had a brush of questions that kind of have been addressed already, but have we, is there any kind of recent appraisal on that property? Or have we had any kind of comparison with that piece of property with anything else?
There is not and uh, we're not required to get one. I will tell you that it's a matter of public record. Mr. Anderson paid uh, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand a few years ago. Uh, obviously, he has sunk some money in there. Uh, he is looking to get his money back and only getting his money back, so. Uh, that is, I would suggest a uh, our yardstick to measure by that uh, he had to pay the eight twenty-five a few years ago.
And we, we still have the ability to use it for something else if we get, if we choose to in the future.
Well, Kate, you're exactly right. We have a free hand. We uh.
Pretty generous.
You know, we could do uh, uh, items in the future and that even includes with a uh, a vote of the people even selling it again.
Again.
Uh, after it served its purpose. Now, if future councils, for example, decide they wanna use it for housing or park or something like, well, then they could, they could do that as well.
Carmen, I couldn't tell if you had a comment or we're just nodding.
She's standing up.
Okay.
All right, uh, any further discussion? A roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifold.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Collier.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes. And uh, for ordinance number nine, uh, it's my honor to pass the gavel. To Jeremy.
Forty seconds later.
By the time Chuck gets to the door, it'll be done, so.
That's the point.
Right. Yeah. Be careful. Getting him out of the room is gonna take longer than. You want a motion?
Want a motion. Haven't done this in a while.
I'll move to approve ordinance number nine, series two thousand twenty four, an ordinance approving a lease and purchase option agreement for the certain real property described as Idaho Springs. P Point Graham classer number eight forty, Idaho Springs, Colorado.
I'll second.
Lisa's second. Any discussion?
And this, if I recall correctly, is the one that's right next to the eighteen fifty-six.
Yeah, it's just, it's like this little.
I have a picture of it.
It's like a triangle. You have a picture. It's like a triangle.
Okay.
You got the one lot that doesn't, isn't part of this. You got the lot, the buildings on, and on this end, you've got this.
Weird triangle.
This weird triangle, yeah, essentially is what it is. It completes that, so allows the project to go all the way to.
Essentially is. My understanding is this gives us better access to the creek than the steepness of the other.
It does, cause you get behind the existing building, it's vertical.
Yes.
And the whole triangle, it's not. So long-term, yeah, it's got creek access.
Do you guys want me to pull it up on the screen?
Can we see it, please? And are the two, um, the two concrete entrances, are those on the eighteen fifty-six piece?
I think one is actually. Either on the edge or closer to this triangle.
I think the guy that owns eighteen fifty-six put those in.
Boy, he's part of the project that carved over improvement was.
Was putting those in.
They put the accesses in, but originally they weren't going to, you know, sidewalk, if I remember right. I'm going back to ways here with this discussion.
No, they were always going to have some, sorry, cause it was always a business, even at the time.
Those accesses actually are ideal.
Yeah.
And it's probably even more ideal if it down the road, if they were to sell it.
Yeah.
It was no longer parking lot for some reason, it was housing would be part of the water line size.
It was the other side of the street, the north side of the.
That's right.
South side of the street, that uh, sidewalk is not a sidewalk.
Yes, that, that was right.
This is it right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's silly.
Yeah, it's silly not to do the entire.
It absolutely, it's hard that we can't pick up that square for that, for reasonable purchase.
Usually you can see the.
The outline.
The outline, but it's basically this piece right here.
Yeah.
Oh, there it goes. Sorry.
It goes to the.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense.
And maybe I should ask this question.
This one right here.
Are we in discussion?
Yeah, we're still in discussion.
So, have we had any, has there been any surveys on these properties? We have knowledge.
Well, when he does, when the gentleman is selling to us, Mr. Anderson.
You would think he.
He would have probably have to have had a survey on his property.
Possibly, yes.
And I would know, I would expect that Chuck would have done that simply because he's been involved with it.
What's your curiosity about the survey?
Yeah.
Well, a survey helps you determine if you're gonna do something with the property. Sometimes you're required to have a survey if you're gonna make improvements, right?
Certainly.
So, I mean, are we gonna, I'm just wondering if we're gonna have a survey that we're gonna have to.
Pay for?
Pay for.
Uh, I get what you're saying. I think the, the, their last survey was when they were gonna put the, and that's when we found out all that stuff about the water is when they wanted to put the apartments up, so that's how we know that, that.
I would think that Richard Anderson probably had one done.
Looking that long.
Utilities are far in, well, natural gas lines and there's existing water and.
I was on something when that was being discussed, so. But anyway, I, I get what you're saying. We might have to pick up the.
We might have to pick up the survey.
Yeah.
But isn't that rate like, what would that be? Isn't that rated commercial?
Well, all the surveys sometimes like for something like that's gonna be ten grand or. Well, all the surveys sometimes like for something like that's going to be ten grand or something.
Because what we want to do with it, if we, we be on the parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we we would have to probably have a survey anyway, just as part of that project.
But over the next five years or so, if we're looking at a parking lot. Like, will we have to pony up right now?
I don't know.
I wouldn't anticipate it, it's all, all depends. It's so, I don't know, be walking, but it kind of is the rules.
I think Jeremy's right. There will likely be some amount of survey work that has to be done for the design of a parking lot, even if it's a basic. Parking lot.
For drainage and stuff.
Drainage and then how many spots and how they line up and how much space.
But I'm just curious if Richard was looking at doing improvements. I'm thinking that he was possibly looking at improvements. Maybe he had a survey already.
Are you asking maybe if we could ask for that?
Well, it's public record. If he had it, it's going to be recorded.
Yeah, we can, we can go.
We can find out.
I. I know that there was some thoughts about development on that parcel, so it's possible that they at least have something.
Well, Chuck's piece, the the piece that we're talking about, Apple, it's just so teeny.
Yeah, it's, yes, teeny.
It will help traffic flow though in that parking lot, like it'll make it a little bit easier to.
Well, just means it's one piece that we don't have to worry about.
This is just part of the the entire comp plan of cleaning up all these weird little parcels that. Exist all over. Chuck owns a couple of them. Let's get real.
Any further discussion?
He has some very interesting property.
Good, good. You want to do a roll call, vote?
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifol.
Yes.
Jim Clark?
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Hey Collier?
Yes.
Mayor Proten, Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good job, major proten. After all the discussions, I didn't know.
All right, we have uh, one thing under ordinance second reading and then it's uh, ordinance number six. Do I have a motion?
I will move to approve ordinance number six, series two thousand twenty-four. An ordinance approving the conditional conveyance of property known as lot three of the block fifty-seven. Dash former Gold Digger Field subdivision.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, second from Jeremy and uh, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifol.
Yes.
Jim Clark?
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Hey Collier?
Yes.
Jeremy Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. Uh, next up is our city attorney. Uh, Carmen, glad to have you. And we've got a little something special tonight, huh?
You do, Mayor Council. Uh, first of all, I apologize that this was not in your packet. Um, a rather late discovery on our part. You have coming your way in future meetings. Um, in March and April, the uh, potential annexation of certain portions of I seventy. I seventy, there's a, there's a section kind of in the middle of the city that currently is annexed. And yet, on the east end and the west end, there are big sections that are not uh, annexed and. Uh, we've been working quite literally, I think, for years to to work with C dot to get those portions of I seventy, essentially that go all the way through the city. Actually annexed into the city, so Chief and his folks can have jurisdiction, uh, among other reasons. And uh, we just learned late last week that in order to actually formally. Put the documents in front of you that again are coming to annex those portions of right of way. C dot requires some sort of formal expression of um, support for the proposed annexation, so. Um, we as staff discuss and and think that a letter is the best, easiest way to express that support. So if you would, council, I would love it if someone would make a motion. I believe you have it at your dais to move to direct staff to prepare such a letter and for the mayor to sign the same.
Uh, I would like to make that motion. Uh, I move to direct staff to prefer, prepare a letter in support. Of the annexation of two portions of C dot I seventy right of way. One on the east end of the city, one on the west end, totaling approximately one hundred acres. And authorize the mayor, myself, to execute the same once prepared. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, second Lisa and um, any discussion?
So this is my chief's job easier?
What does annexation entail? So I'm assuming C dot will continue to maintain the highway itself, but so what about? Uh, lighting, gore areas, things of that nature. Hmm, that's a good question.
Yeah, that's a good question.
That's a real good question. Do we, do we know?
Change, to my knowledge, won't change anything about what what's already in the city. It'll be, it'll be the same, Paul. So they'll continue to allow, you know, we don't pay for street lights, to my knowledge, so. Um, our maintenance street lights actually on the I seventy proper.
Right.
I know we have had some back and forth about it, the interchanges. They're like at Idaho Street, uh, and thirteenth, but.
And uh, chief, anything uh, of your feelings about this?
Uh, well, Mayor Council, this was something that was discovered shortly after I was appointed chief. Um, I, you know, I asked for a map from G I S and was surprised to find that there were. Basically two sections of I seventy that aren't in the city limits. There had been a long-term agreement, basically between those. C S P and Idaho Springs P D. To provide services for that area, you know, traffic, best traffic crashes and everything else. Um, really, it kind of was like a handshake deal. So what this does is, is just. Uh, legalizes and formalizes that, that, that uh, agreement. So that's what this is.
All right. Uh, any further uh, discussion? All right, uh, roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifol.
Yes.
Jim Clark?
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Hey Collier?
Yes.
Jeremy Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. Uh, city administrator, uh, Andy, you have no request for action. Uh, just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything uh, further to share tonight?
Nothing else this time.
All right, well, thank you. And uh, let's see, Jonathan, you have two requests for action.
Yes, sir.
All right, and fortunately, we have discussed both of these uh, in our session.
Uh, Gary Morris here as well, if you have questions.
Oh, oh, that's, that's good to know that he's online. Uh, and uh. With, when the discussion part uh, comes up, we we certainly are going to make a point of that. Uh, do I have a motion on the first uh, item of the corkscrew exit?
Make a motion to approve the construction of the corkscrew exit feature in the Virginia Canyon Mountain Park in the amount of twenty-one thousand. Line item twenty-one dash zero zero dash six zero two four parking purpose.
Thank you, Jeremy. And do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second from Scott. Uh, any discussion and please keep in mind that uh, Gary is uh, with us uh, tonight. Uh, virtually.
Yeah, it does.
All right, uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifol.
Yes.
Jim Clark?
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Hey Collier?
Yes.
Jeremy Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. Uh, the uh, second item is uh, for uh. New equipment and emergency access trail. Uh, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the construction of a new equipment and emergency access trail in the Virginia Canyon Canyon Mountain Park. In the amount of forty-nine thousand from line item twenty-one dash zero zero dash six zero two four park improvements.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second? Uh, second from Jeremy? And uh, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Scott Penel.
Yes.
Lisa Manifol.
Yes.
Jim Clark?
Yes.
Janine Mariani.
Yes.
Hey Collier?
Yes.
Jeremy Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Chuck Hart.
Yes. All right, uh, Dylan, uh. No request for action, just want to make sure you didn't have anything further to share? All right, thank you. And uh, Wonder, uh, thank you for your report. I was actually relieved that uh, sales are up. And I believe that this is reflective of last year's one cent. Sales tax increase, so it is a legitimate increase, even if we factor in inflation. So certainly good news. And uh, Wonder, thank you again. Um, chief, um. Thank you for the report. Always, uh, you know, never a dull moment. Um, just wanted to make sure you didn't have anything further to share tonight? Okay, all right, thank you. And uh, Public Works, um. Paul, thank you uh, for your report and the building, of course. Is at a stage where it's like a miracle how fast it's, it's going up. I, I think. Everybody, every citizen has to just marvel at how, how nice it's looking and how quick it's going up.
Yeah, that foundation took a minute. Uh, there were several delays on getting that in and started and then. Continued, uh, so, uh, but once that was finished, then the rest was basically just went up.
Yeah, yeah, uh, very well. Uh. Ed, uh, thank you for your report. Uh, did you have anything further to share tonight?
I have an update.
Oh.
On the backflow. The B P C C C violation.
Okay.
We are finished with that now. It won't be on the next one.
Very good.
The P L C stuff like. She was asking about, well. They did um, another round of working off the bugs today. And it looks like they're going to be finished.
Well, that's excellent.
So we know more than that.
All right, that's it.
That's all it's changed since.
Thank you. And uh, Paul, do you think of something else?
Well, yeah, um. Wall Street twenty twenty-two, Wall Street, we did have a, um, well, we didn't have, but there was a, uh. Failure of a retaining wall between two private properties.
Oh.
Oh.
Uh, uh, there was some damage to a car that was parked in the driveway. Again, it's not a city wall, uh, but we did help the, the property owner out. Give them a place to dispose of some of that concrete. Um, and they'll be working with their neighbor to hopefully repair that.
Wow, well, that's good to know. All right, that's almost in my backyard and I didn't know.
Can we at some point in time have a conversation about the retaining walls in town?
I think that'd be a good idea.
I think it's time to start.
Right now, we leave it up to the property owners.
Well. It it's only, my biggest concern with this is obviously between two houses. That's just something that you're going to have to come to, you know, some agreement on. But when it's, your, when your retaining wall is holding up. One of our roads. That I have a bit of an issue with and I think it needs to be discussed, especially on wall, all the Wall Street. High wall, I mean, every, all of the the big streets are holding up our roads and it's essentially the residents' responsibility.
Well, we have had two other failures of. Of retaining walls on Colorado, along Colorado Boulevard. One was at Seventh and Colorado. That wall completely failed. And fell into the sidewalk. Uh, and that has since been rebuilt. And another one that the city assisted with. In reconstruction at the Catholic Church at. Fifteenth in Colorado.
Yep.
We remediated that wall, kept that wall, but uh, there was a lot of excavation work on the backside. And then pushed that wall back into place and then pinned that wall back into the soil. Uh, so there were two other failures there with the, and they were good walls. They just, they're not made for a hundred years.
Yeah. Mine are, like, we're going on a hundred and thirty, some hold.
Well, I know, we're talking to the residents, particularly on East, um, Wall Street. A lot of the residents, I know that some of it has been residents not having similar trains of thought. But a lot of them are in a similar mindset and I said, great, come to, come see us, but I think. Maybe we need to reach out to them because if they're in a good place, all of them in the. Same frame of mind, I think we need to jump on that.
Well, we do have actually codes for rebuilding your walls. It's the existing walls, if they fail, the road fails and that's really, and or our water system fails. Depending on where they fall.
But some of it has been ownership, like if you look at particularly West Side Wall Street, that ownership is wonky. On the road and then the wall that goes down right on the backside of Virginia.
Are you talking about, like, everybody has a different kind?
Yes.
Well, that's because it's a homeowner's responsibility. You're going to do whatever you can afford, you know, I mean, some people are just.
There's also they didn't agree and I think uh, there's been enough challenges that they are willing to.
There is some of that.
Yeah, there's a little bit of that too.
So you make a valid point on C, C dot does. Structural review of their bridges, right? And they grade those? There's ought to be something out there for retaining walls that.
I personally like to know.
Structural reviews are done.
Yeah.
Uh, periodically as well, so.
But if you're proactive, you can prevent things from happening sometimes.
Catastrophic rather than.
And uh, minor repair compared to a big repair, right?
Great ideas, Scott.
Well, it's like you said, those property.
But you.
But it, you're just, it's just like, it's just like when Colorado was built, Jimmy. The, the question was. Do you want to upgrade your lines or would you rather wait for them to fail? And it, you don't have to do it.
Sure.
But ultimately, I would tell you that I would expect that a lot, some people in town that have recently moved here. Have no idea that those retaining walls are their responsibility.
Sure.
Because it was definitely not told to us.
I mean, maybe it's.
It's dumb on our part.
Going through a work session with Carmen because I think it's a legal thing too, when it becomes a private individual, right?
Nonetheless, nonetheless, it's your property.
But it's like, you can't ask for it.
Utility, you know.
Well, I mean, you could actually say, I mean, if you want to keep maintaining that retaining wall. We're all good with that, but otherwise the city's going to take over. And by the way, I'm no way. I know, I'm not saying that we would, but I'm just saying that that's a possibility too, that we.
You're right, but that's also, I mean, I think it's an open gate.
If we have residents that have previously been unwilling to work together to solve, I mean, come on, we've all driven West Side Wall Street, that's.
How, how, how about, how about this? How about we make a point, this is very important. That we discuss this, a work session in the future, to try to come up. With something that, that would be fair and and workable.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I like Scott's idea though, as a.
That, but I'm also heartened by the fact.
Our engineers to, to uh, maybe assess structures and and potential failures.
Voluntarily, voluntarily, to Jimmy's point, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, and I, yeah, Kate, please, don't think I'm.
Yeah, don't blame.
I know you're not.
I'm just saying that, that they're, you know.
I wasn't giving it like.
You know, they're, that, you know, still American, people on their private stuff is just that.
I, I, Jimmy, I, I probably agree with you more on that than you think, but I, and I'm, like I'm saying, it's voluntary. I personally.
Yeah, yeah.
Am surrounded by wa, by, by retaining walls. I would love to know what every one of my.
One hundred percent, and you, you and, well, not you anymore.
My more.
You, you absolutely, this topic of conversation affects you more than anybody.
But it's, but, but I worry more about the people that are holding up the roads than my little wall coming down and it's just a little big, you know, never.
I, I agree.
Well, I'm very heartened though that the city was able to make Virginia Canyon Road work. I think that they had some of similar problems with not only property lines and the wonkiness. but maybe a different, like, not everybody was on the same page. You know, so I think if, if we're in a place where we can get people on the same page to work to find a solution that doesn't infringe on property rights, and doesn't make our city's job, like, completely malicious?
Yeah.
How, like, how do we do that, because the point is, a lot of people are not built for a hundred plus years.
Right, agree.
Well, I think it's a little unique that some individuals retaining walls sometimes hold up our road, right? And that.
Pretty not, it, it is, but it's not really that unique, it happens.
So, that's why I'm saying that involved Carmen, is where does our liability lie when something happens?
Same as when you slip and fall across street for your old place.
Well, usually the attorneys go out, I'm sorry, but the attorneys go after five different people at the same time.
Yeah, it's to be, we're watch out, yeah. Anyway, it, it is a big discussion for.
Well, we, we, we will, uh, talk, uh, further about this subject, it's very important, yes. And, uh, I'm looking down, uh, here under Mayor and Council, you know, with the Public Works Building going up, it was just a reminder to me that, uh, our department heads, when you really step back and take a look at this, it is incredible to me what they have been doing, and basically, all this stuff's happening at the same time. You know, we just had, uh, right, a, a major eight and a half million dollar, uh, water treatment plant uh, come online, that will set us up probably for the next fifty or sixty years. We've got a, uh, city maintenance building that was long overdue, but again, it, that's gonna set us up, I'm sure, for the next fifty years, we'll, we'll be really in a good spot. We are taking on this situation with the fire authority, no matter how you come down, with funding it, we all realize that we're woefully behind the curve on what it takes uh, to properly, uh, have a, a response with the, you know, our current level of funding. So, we got a major overhaul going on there, and I look at billing and, and water, and so many of these meters that we don't even know how old they are. And I'm just suggesting, and, and I, I'm certain I've forgotten a lot of things, but. Oh, PD? I, oh, I was getting there, Jim. Oh, sorry, I was, I was getting there.
Yeah, I was like, wait a minute.
So, so Chief comes on, and a couple of years ago, his, uh, job description would have been like re, rebuilder-in-chief.
Yes.
He came in with a decimated, uh, department, he's down like half-staff, and he builds it back, and now we are in the process of having a real, uh, you know, updated, modern police uh, area that we could all be proud of, right in the center of town, and all I'm saying is, the fact that all of this has happened in the same few years
Yeah.
is really, I think, speaks volumes about the department heads that we have. And frankly, I wouldn't have blamed anybody if they quit, uh, somewhere along the line, you know, because this is above and beyond what would normally be in the scope of a, of a department head, I mean, you know, you're probably gonna be around once in your career and have something like this happen.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and that's if you have a really long career, so anyways, a very heartfelt thank you to the department heads, and I just wanted to point out to Council, it's pretty wild that Idaho Springs was pretty sleepy, really with nothing happening much since I seventy going through. And we have all of these pretty major, uh, overhauls and improvements, I would suggest, in the same, uh, few years, pretty, pretty amazing. And don't forget the mayor for leading.
I was gonna say, I, you, you guys were being on council when, when a lot of this was started, so, he had the staff, so, guys, everybody's playing.
This was all staff, well, um, but anyways, uh, thank you.
We are taking on a lot, I think it says a lot for us, you know, staff is supporting this, but we are not all, you know, loggerheads or fighting or whatever, because we see all of the challenges that are facing us, like, not, not every town does this, not every town.
Gets along.
Well, it gets along, but looks are, oh geez, we have all these projects in the eyeball, and goes ahead and decides to take them on, and we are doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
Hundred percent.
Idaho Springs Renaissance.
Yes.
All right, well, uh, anything?
I'll add, uh, this, to me, it speaks volumes about people who care about what's going on, so.
Yeah, I agree. Hundred percent, yeah. For me, absolutely, uh, anything further before I adjourn? Uh.
Janine's got something.
Oh, I see your hand.
Yeah, I had a quick question, is there any more information about the ice issue on Riverside Drive we heard about last time?
It's all melted.
It hasn't snowed, yeah.
So, there's no ice.
Not right now.
Pretty easy.
Get us gone, I think.
That's right, yeah. Till, yeah, till Monday.
What I need to say about that is, um, Paul was on vacation that week, I, I have spoken with Paul about it, uh, we're gonna follow up with our city engineer about what, uh, what modification might be possible in that area, it's, it's a very tough spot, it's, it's shaded. Um, it's, it's been a rough year for ice this year, uh, but there shouldn't be water going in, in the garages and things like that, so if there's some other, um, modification that could be done down there, we're certainly gonna explore it and bring that back to Council, so we'll have a follow-up, uh, work session with Council on this after, uh, Paul and the, and the city engineer, uh, have had a chance to, to study this a little bit more.
And Janine, a very caring question, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for asking that.
Well, my final question, um, do we have a plan for if it does dump too deep a snow and then it doesn't melt, like, because I know we talked about that in the last meeting, about, okay, how do we mitigate what needs to happen just for the rest of the region?
I think they had.
Paul's like, huh.
Buzz ice melt.
I see that look, man.
No, no, I mean, our first priority is to open roadways up and then, uh, then follow up with some cleanup when and where we can, so, uh, you're gonna start lines out, and, uh, if you get a lot of snow, you might see the loader out, or the loaders out. Uh, but ideally, it's just gonna be the trucks out, we're gonna keep roads open. Um, then, once the snow stops and we start going in the cleanup mode, then it's running, running loaders and trying to move snow where we can.
Okay, and I think moving the snow, like, before it has a chance to melt and harden and the ice, really would make a difference for it.
And.
I know, everybody's like the same problems, I know they do.
If you'll notice, many of the places where the ice is building up is where vehicles are parked for multiple days at a time. So, we don't get an opportunity to go clear that before it melts, freezes, melts, freezes, and now you have a car that's locked in ice. We've never had an opportunity to, to clean that.
That might be, that might be something that we talked about, though, is that, that could be like almost an ordinance thing, where you, you have to allow them from this time to this time, fifteen hours, I don't even know, afterwards, so that they can clear.
Point four, didn't it?
So that they can move the, the, the snow away, I mean, it's not a bad.
It's in, it's in there already.
Is it?
Yes. And I'm thinking the HOA, they, they, if they haven't already addressed it, might wanna address it.
Yeah, but there, there's some that they will.
On the streets.
They have to, well, as far as I know, the twenty-four hours is clearing sidewalks, things of that nature.
Yeah.
Uh, but not necessarily, not necessarily moving cars.
Oh, on the vehicle, I'm sorry to that, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what I meant, is that they would have to move their cars to the other side, which would be totally doable, because you guys could still drive down the street.
Certainly.
And clear the snow. I mean, if I was them, I would just move my car to the other side of the street right now.
The HOA person, the HOA president?
We plowed to the north side.
Just so we can get through the rest of the winter, because that's what I worry about, like, how we get them through the rest of the winter.
That's what they're, they're looking into.
All right, anything, uh, further before we adjourn?
No, sir.
Uh, hearing none, we'll adjourn at seven fifty.